I've got.
Gentlemen.
I just don't do anything.
I don't do anything.
You recall the November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the City Council of Coldwater, Michigan, to order? Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the party. I pledge allegiance to the party. I pledge allegiance to the party. I pledge allegiance to the party.
A little feedback here.
I pledge allegiance to the party. 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 I pledge allegiance to the party.
Wow.
Phew.
Make it stop.
Welcome everybody. And to continue with the clerk, please call the wall.
Councilmember Rissman?
Present.
Councilmember Mackin?
Present.
Councilmember Knut?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson is absent. Councilmember Petsko?
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Here.
Councilmember Houts?
Here.
Councilmember Hazelbaker?
Here.
Mayor Kramer?
I'm here. We did hear from Councilman Johnson. He is ill tonight, so we look for a motion to excuse Chad.
I'll make the motion. Support.
Travis? We have a motion and we have support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried.
It's on.
It is? Okay. We have a spot on our agenda now and at the end of the meeting for public comments. If anyone would like to address the council, they may do so now or at the end of the meeting. Seeing none, oh, okay. Seeing none, we'll move into our consent agenda. These are items we consider to be routine. We'll take them in one motion unless someone up here or someone in the audience wishes an item removed for further clarification or discussion. Tonight on our consent agenda are our minutes of October twenty-fourth, our library advisory board minutes of September twelfth, DDA minutes of September twenty-eighth, housing commission minutes of October eleventh, rec board minutes of September seventh, our BPU minutes of October fifth, South Central Power Agency minutes of September first, BPU financial reports for September, City of Coldwater financial reports for September, memo from me regarding some board appointments, and a proclamation declaring a homeless awareness month. Those are the items on our consent agenda tonight. Does anyone in the audience wish anything removed? Anybody up here? And we would like a motion to approve our consent agenda, please.
No move.
Randall?
Support.
John? We have motion and we have support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Consent agenda approved. Number twelve with bills and accounts, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. Questions? Motion to pay?
Move to pay the bills.
Thanks, Michael.
Support.
Thanks, Scott. We have motion and we have support to pay our bills. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number thirteen is city manager report. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, everyone. A number of different acknowledgements or recognitions this evening. We'd like to recognize and acknowledge the many efforts of those that have helped the city conduct a successful election. We had about a forty percent turnout, over thirty-five hundred residents voted, and due to the efforts of Deputy City Clerk Shama Chavez and City Clerk Sue Heath, there are thirty-two election workers and members of our municipal services and customer services and IT all had parts to play in the conducting of the election, and we just want to thank them for all of their work last week and a long day and a late night that last Tuesday. A couple personnel updates. We now have a code enforcement officer, as you may have seen in the newspaper. We'd like to welcome Steve McManamie to the organization as the city's new Neighborhood Services Code Enforcement Officer. So Steve is retiring as a deputy from the Branch County Sheriff's Department after nearly twenty-eight years, and we'd like to welcome him and his duties will begin with the city on Monday, the twenty-eighth. Secondly, in the same department, Neighborhood Services, we have a new part-time administrative assistant, Stacy Lozada, and we'd like to welcome her. She comes to us from the Buckland Law Office, and she also begins in a couple weeks. So welcome to the two of them, to the organization. Also like to recognize and acknowledge the volunteers, twenty-five volunteers who helped to plant about thirty-seven trees a couple weeks ago, consisting of about nine different varieties that were planted throughout the city, from a number of different organizations, including the Coldwater Township Sunrise Rotary Club, Lake Middle School, Oakwood Village, Neighborhood and Wing House Museum, and thank Municipal Services Director Todd Meister for organizing that. In addition, Municipal Services related, leaf collection is ongoing and will continue where they're permitting over the next couple weeks as DMS crews work their way through the community. They're working, they're finishing up second ward, hopefully beginning the third ward soon, and they've just been delayed due to some equipment breakdowns, but we are utilizing overtime to help take advantage of the time that we have and complete them as quickly as possible, so we appreciate everyone's patience as they complete their work. Couple other updates on city projects. The sidewalk project, which you did authorize, with the time of year and the availability of the contractor waning, we've pushed that off to the spring, so that'll be the first thing that occurs next year, much like what occurred this year, and it worked out really well, both for the contractor and for the city, and having that additional side work done. And then Backyard Creations was our contractor this year, working on the landscaping in the various parking lots, and so that's been completed now for the season. This is our one time a year when we make a plug, so the Branch County Community Foundation has a holiday decoration endowment fund, and so for those that might look to help us improve and update our Christmas decorations through the years, there is a fund at the community foundation that they can donate to, and then we utilize the interest that's earned off of that to conduct replacement of worn-out decorations or make repairs and improvements to the ones we have. And then lastly, next week being Thanksgiving, the city offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. So that's all I have for you this evening.
Thanks, Keith. Questions? Comments? If not, a motion to approve Keith's report.
No move.
Thanks, John.
Support.
Thanks, Travis. We have motion and we have support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number fourteen is a memo from Deb Sikorsky regarding the renewal of the downtown central business district parking lot maintenance and improvement program. I just set a public hearing for November twenty-eighth. Deb?
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Originally, this parking lot special assessment should have been the final public, or the final public hearing this evening. There was, we're not going to make the publication timeline schedule, so I'm asking that council review this and set the final public hearing for November twenty-eighth. We have had absolutely no comment since our last meeting on the twenty-fourth.
You're gonna miss this, aren't you?
Yes.
We would, they're asking us to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash ninety-four. Do you have questions for her, but I think we've been through this.
Move to pass, approve Resolution number twenty-two dash ninety-four.
Mike?
Support.
Thanks, Emily. Sorry, Scott. We have a motion and we have support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And motion carried. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Number fifteen is a letter from Megan regarding improvements and lease for the Putnam Building. Megan?
This matter was before council on September twenty-sixth, and you did vote to introduce it. This is a one-year planning lease. We've had in the ensuing more than thirty days, no comments and no other proposals for the use of the building. This is a one-year lease with no cash rent, but they would be providing volunteer labor donations and hopefully grants to clean, repair and restore the building and the grounds for use as a community center for cultural, social and artistic meetings and functions, and also installing a kitchen and a bathroom. The city is obligated under this lease to install heating and an air conditioning unit sufficient for the first floor and also plumbing for the kitchen and the bathroom, capped at twenty thousand dollars. So Kathy Babbert is here from the organization, if you have any further questions for her, and...
Kathy, do you want to just give a brief update of any progress in the last month and a half, or new great ideas, or anything?
Carbrained ideas?
Anything.
Mayor and council people and Keith, I'm glad to come back to you now and hope that everything will go well tonight because the enthusiasm and support in the community has been overwhelming. We have people just calling me up and wanting to help, wanting to volunteer. Our volunteers have such expertise, experience, that we're able to take advantage of those. We have one hundred and ninety-eight Facebook members now, new ones every single day. The progress, and we've also, along with volunteer help, we are starting to receive donations in many different sizes. Our, we are obligated to provide liability insurance, and I was handed an envelope with five one-hundred-dollar bills in it to cover that, so things like this just keep happening. To update you on the bathrooms, we have volunteer construction workers who used to volunteer at Habitat for Humanity, but they're looking for projects to do, so they will do that, and Home Depot has decided they will make us a Team Depot project, which means five thousand dollars worth of supplies, and they will actually come and help. Landscaping, we're working right now on curb appeal, so when you go by the building, you don't see weeds on that west side. We've done a lot of work to the little, we call it the secret garden. We have a horticulturist who is advising us and working, you know, labor and expertise there. Showcase Gardens just volunteered mulch. I went out there and I said, "We need some mulch. Would you can..." Oh, yeah. Okay, here's a truckload. So this just keeps happening. We are working on a five-year plan now of budgeting and planning, and that is being guided by experts who have executive director and grant experience with nonprofits. We have a couple of donors who are considering some very large donations to us. Hopefully, those will come through. Our ten-member board is now being advised by five different committees. The S and K has started on the plumbing and HVAC, and we hope that they'll be done in a couple weeks because we would like to have the house open during the Christmas parade, so it's all lit up. During the Halloween parade, I was actually in the parade and I drove by, the building was all dark, and I thought, you know, by the Christmas parade, we got to have this place lit up and decorated, and we'll have cookies donated and hopefully warmth so people can come in and see our progress. So that's what we're doing now. Things are happening. It's very exciting, and I thank you so much for your support. Are there any questions?
Questions for Kathy? We all appreciate you and the group's effort, Kathy, and we wish you the best of luck.
All right.
There are no questions. They're looking for either adopt or not adopt Resolution twenty-two ninety-five and approve or not approve lease agreement A twenty-two thirty-two. This is a roll call vote, since it is leasing city property.
Motion.
To approve both?
Support.
Okay. We have a motion from Jim and support from Scott, I believe. Okay.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
Councilmember Petsko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazelbaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Houts?
Yes.
Councilmember Knut?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes. Motion carried. And I thank you again, Kathy. Number sixteen is a letter from Keith regarding MDOT US-12 improvements. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. So this is the contract that would put in place the agreement for the work that's scheduled, not only for what MDOT is planning to do for US-12 west of Western Avenue to just west of the Cemetery Drive approach, and in addition to what they're planning to do, it includes some additional work, both at our request and as is necessary for them to have agreed to put the sidewalk on the north side of the bridge. And so the city's, the city's portion or responsibility under this contract would amount to three hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars. That would be for sidewalk work on the north side. That would be for the resurfacing of Willow Lane from US-12 there to just before the hill at Pilot Knob, so kind of leading to the, leading to the north cemetery, if you want to scroll up to the, to the map, and upgrades to the railing, upgrades to the fencing to make them look more attractive. There will actually be a net reduction in the amount of fencing out there. The grades don't require the amount of fencing that currently exists, so that will be peeled back on both ends, so that'll help open up both on the cemetery side and the Rotary Park side, some visibility, and just looking forward to a really nice project out there that will help enhance the western entrance to the city. It is something that we, this project has been in the works for a couple of years now when you're working with MDOT, and so with your authorization, this would require us then to enter in the agreement and pay for our portion. I believe the total amount is about a one-point-seven million dollar project, of which we have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Questions for Keith?
Yes, for the sidewalks, with the redesign of the bridge and make it more decorative, is there going to be some type of barrier between the sidewalks and the road themselves, or is it going to be...
So on the bridge portion, yes. Yes, it's, there'll be sidewalks that lead from now the gas station west to the bridge, and there'll be a separation on the bridge between the sidewalk and the vehicle lane, and then it'll exit to the west to Willow Lane, and the sidewalk will then go down, intersect with the street at that point.
Didn't you show different options of the railings? Did you decide on a railing? That was...
Yeah, way back, yeah, so it's, they're going to be, they'll be black, but yes, they're, I don't, I don't have them prepared for you tonight, but yes, both the railing and the fencing are an upgrade that they were going to do a minimum. MDOT would put in a minimum, and then we upgraded those two at the time that you, that we chose to do that a year ago now, probably.
Has any conversation been made with MDOT in regards to what we are proposing to do with the whole Rotary Park area, specifically with the idea that, you know, we're going to have potentially more traffic going into what would be the cemetery entrance now? And just so that they're aware that this is what we're planning on doing and...
Yeah, of course, we weren't thinking about that at the time that this was originally being planned, two or three years ago. Just communicated with them over the last week, and you probably even haven't even seen the email, or you're just teeing it up for me to make reference to.
I didn't see the email. Good analogy.
So yes, yes, we've spoken to them about it. It's like turning, turning the large ship at MDOT. You know, this project has now been bid and awarded, and so what they would, you know, in their description, there would be quite a bit that would be necessary to look at doing that, and rather than amend this project, they would rather come back and look at it if we experienced some issues or if there was additional changes, that they could do something, we could work with them after the fact to, if we found that we were having, if we increase the, increase the traffic there because a boat launch shows up on the west side, or if we have problems with, with the transition as they're creating that left turn lane from the bridge to the east towards western. So that's a long answer to your, but, no, they're, they're not very receptive to changing anything now, so...
How far off of the highway right-of-way for the state do we take control back over on that entrance? I mean, if we want to widen it, we can just widen it, can't we? If we have to?
Widen the road or the...
The entrance, the entrance up to the highway.
Yes, as far as the drive approach. If we, if we wanted to make changes to the drive approach itself...
We don't have to.
Well, you're still working in the MDOT right-of-way, so the right-of-way is up about a hundred feet. US-12 is fifty feet or so from the mid-center, from the center, either direction, so it's a hundred-foot wide right-of-way. When you're doing any work within their right-of-way, you have to get permits, just like for us, so if you're going to do a brand-new drive approach, if we were going to do the Rotary Park project, yeah, we'll be, we'll be getting permits from them for the drive approaches or any work within the right-of-way, but we can, we can design that.
Questions for Keith? Obviously, the bridge on the north side is, will be nice, much safer. If there are no questions, they're looking for action on the resolution and the agreement.
Motion.
Support.
Motion to adopt and approve?
Yes.
Okay. Jim and Travis for the support. Any final questions? Not? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And motion carried. Number seven is a memo from Todd regarding purchase of a dump truck.
They were hard at work past five o'clock.
Yes. Right in front of my house.
They were still out there working, collecting leaves, but this isn't for leaf collection. This is for, essentially for snow plowing and other heavy-duty operations. So this is a pretty standard request, and in some ways, it's not very standard. So the standard request is, in our capital planning, we update these vehicles periodically, and the vehicle we're looking to replace is a two thousand and one model year, heavy-duty plow truck and dump truck. However, we're not planning, it's not planned in this current budget year, it's planned in next budget year, but because of the planning for the construction of these vehicles, it just, we know that the timeframe needed to produce the vehicle is a minimum of twelve to sixteen months, so we're kind of asking for the money to be approved now. Again, this is, this is a planned part of our capital budget, so this is, you know, already considered for next year. Obviously, the budget's not approved for next year, but we have long been considering this. So right now, we kind of need to get in line for the vehicle to be produced, and there's two parts to producing one of these plow trucks, and that is the chassis itself, which, that is what takes a long period of time to produce. Once we, you know, get in line with the reservation, that will be a good twelve to sixteen months to produce that, and then the upfitting, which is the dump body of it and the snowplows and things like that, and that's a much shorter turnaround time. That's only, you know, a month to two months at the most. So we're looking now to, to make a reservation with the international dealer to get an international body truck for our replacement for our plow truck. So we have a bid from the international dealer, and again, this is the MyDeal state pricing that they use, and all the other trucks in our fleet are international as well for our large, our heavy-duty trucks, so we have that of almost eighty-nine thousand for that chassis. So basically, we're looking to get this whole amount approved so that we can produce a PO for that chassis and, again, make that reservation, so it will, it will hopefully be here, be delivered sometime in the next budget year and, and that twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four budget year.
Questions for Todd?
For the truck upfitting, you've got a projected cost. Is that potentially going to change dramatically because of all the cost increases that we've seen across the board for, because of inflation?
Well, we're trying to get a bid for the upfitting, you know, a more solid quote, but that is already kind of an increase from, this is, this is standard upfitting that we, we've had in our previous trucks that we, and the last one we purchased was in two thousand and twenty-one, and so this has already increased from that, so we're, you know, we're anticipating there's going to be some increase from, from our last purchase, so that's already accounting for it with that projected number.
Okay. Move to approve Resolution twenty-two dash ninety-six. Thanks, Michael.
Support.
John? We have motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Number eighteen is a presentation by Pat Poore regarding fiber updates. regarding fiber updates. Pat?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Yeah, so our project is now complete. All nodes are open and online. So we, you know, have gig internet to availability in front of all the citizens of Coldwater and quite a few of the ratepayers for the BPU as well. Considering that the world average for download speed is somewhere around 50 to 60 megabits per second, and their upload speeds are like 11, Coldwater is positioned quite nicely to be able to offer this gig service in both directions. A pretty low price for it. These are starting prices. The gig service starts at $59.99 for home and only $79.99 for business. Generally, home users will see that $59.99 99% of the time. Businesses may see a little rise if they want some upgraded equipment to do some other specialty items. So we do offer, once we get the fiber to the house, and we do run into this from time to time, we get the fiber into the house. And then we still, we have people complain that it's not working right. It's not working right. And they're using really antiquated wireless devices to try to communicate. So we do offer a solution for that. It works very well. I've used it in my house for about two years. I was a very pessimistic wireless user. I've tried many, many different kinds over the years. And when this came out, I tried it as well. I had pretty much everything wired in my house at that time. So when I went through this test, I unplugged everything. This was two years ago. And I have not plugged anything back in. So Xboxes, the TVs, and the, I don't know, I think we got like 50-some devices in our house of some sort of another are all on wireless now. And really, we don't have any trouble. So it's a great solution. It starts at $499 for one pod, and that's per month. And then a secondary pod because this system uses a backend to dynamically improve its networking, protect against malware and some of these other things. Really, it's based on that first pod for the backend. So any additional pods are only $299 at that point. So if you have a bigger house and you need more coverage, that mesh works very well. Like I said, all nodes are online. We have multiple installation crews out in the field. We've got folks doing installs to the actual customers, business customers, residential customers. We also have a specialty crew that's doing underground installations for those folks that their services are coming underground to their house. And I would encourage anyone that wants the service, you know, those folks are going to work really hard over the next few weeks, maybe months. Depends on when we get the first, you know, when it starts to really freeze. But at that point, it kind of stops. So we're trying to kind of get ahead of the game a little bit with those conduit installs. It might take you a little while after that, but we'll be able to install you in the winter if you got your conduit in the ground at least. Our installation calendar is about three or four weeks out right now. And that's all based on marketing, really markets to those folks. And they're doing a really good job of keeping that somewhat short. So, you know, the business case analysis came up. We needed about 1,200 to break even. So we had a goal of 1,200 after installation is complete. Well, installation is complete, and we only got about 246 left to do. So I'm pretty confident we'll make that goal. And as we're converting customers, you know, you take a look at this one. This is showing 2020, 2021, and 2022 numbers for total customers. You can see that we're also increasing customer counts, not just converting the customers that we have. The total price, we don't think there's really much left out there. It's probably been three weeks since anyone's done any work. I know there is one outstanding payment of $15,000, but that's already included in here. This looks like pretty much going to be the final number, 3.7 million out of the 4.2. So we're a little under budget, but a little over time, but we're a little under budget, so. And that's what I had for you tonight. So if you have any questions?
Questions for Pat, Jim?
Not quite. Go ahead. That's right, Mike, go ahead.
It's not a question, it's just a comment. I just hooked up three weeks ago, I think, and I had the underground. They were there. And when they're in the middle of that install, I thought, boy, what'd they do to my lawn? But I'll tell you, when they left, I could hardly tell they were there. And I had underground gas lines, water lines, sprinkler system. They didn't touch any of it. And I'm amazed when they were done.
The sprinkler systems are the most challenging because they're not very deep. We have a few of those. That piece of equipment we bought just before that, the trencher, actually, it's a vibratory plow. So it buries about 18 inches down at the max. But it does, especially if you've got a strong lawn, it's got a nice root system. It can go through there. And yeah, you won't notice it very quickly. If you've got a real patchy yard, yeah, it's going to probably leave a few more marks than that.
I have a question. The large apartment complexes?
The MDUs, yep.
Are we in there?
So we are in the lofts.
Are we in SOC?
We are not in SOC. SOC was originally a charter-only at the time. They don't, the laws have changed on that. So they can't, if somebody at that location wants our service, they can get it. We're still working through the engineering on that and what's the best way to wire them up. SOC is a good opportunity because they've already got Ethernet throughout there. They'd be pretty easy. Places like Whispering Pines, where, and it's all old coax. It's been put in, you know, 30 years ago, 20 years ago, whatever it was. That's a little more of a challenge. And we look at different ways of doing that.
So the new ones, are we going to market to them?
Yes, we plan to market to those folks, yep.
You say you got 954 current customers on the fiber. Need 254 to break even roughly?
Yep.
Are there, of the 954, of those 254, are some of them scheduled or getting online? Do you already have some of those?
Yeah, so that number I pulled last week. So it's likely higher, you know, it's going to be higher than that now. But yeah, so that's not based on the calendar going out three or four weeks. That's what it was at that time when I picked it.
You can do installs overhead all year, all winter, right?
Especially aerial installs, yeah, that's easy to do. We don't, we did the first winter there. We did some underground installs where we left the wires just across the yards. And what a mess when it came to the spring because it was soggy and then the grass started growing, people wanting to mow. So we're trying to avoid that at all costs if we can.
Questions for Pat?
Just so, because somebody asked me from out there, so SOC can get it now, they can order it?
We don't, we don't have any equipment in there yet, but certainly that would be a pushing point if somebody were to order it out there, yeah. I mean, that would make us kind of start to work that process. They wouldn't be able to get it immediately because it's going to require some electronics in the building that we'd have to order. But yeah, that's certainly one of those.
Are the new ones going up a lot? Are we in them up on the hill?
Yes, we're planning on being in them. We're not, I mean, they're putting the Ethernet in there for us.
Okay.
Pat, how many Skitter customers?
Skitters actually kind of gone up a little bit. We had gotten down to about 400 customers. I think we're around 450 now. So it's kind of a bouncing around. We are looking at a new technology that's wireless and uses your standard Apple TV Roku fire stick as another option where, for not having to have a set-top box. The advantage of it is if you want just local TV, our price can really compete well against the Hulus and the Youtubes for a really slim bundle because you can't buy a slim bundle from those folks with local TV. So that's something we're working on. We've actually got to talk with them on Wednesday to see how that might work for them.
Has there been any talk of marketing this too? Because we now live in a post-COVID world where a fair number of people are still working remotely. And that's kind of become more of the norm for us. Is there a number of people in the population of marketing this out? I mean, I realize we have housing issues, but at the same time, you know, we've got a beautiful community. We've got great services that we provide for people. And it's kind of like, here's an attraction that might make some people or businesses consider relocating here because we're providing something that they pay a lot of money for in larger communities.
Absolutely. I'm on the same wavelength as you. That's what I was thinking. We actually secured GigCityMichigan.com for that reason. So we're out in the field. I know, I think Lisa's here. I know she uses it in the economic development side. I think the goal right now is to get the HFC plant offline. So get the customers that are here. But yeah, I think there are, you know, a lot of opportunities to then take this out to the world, take them to shows and things like that.
Any final questions for Pat? No? Thank you very much. Good presentation. Thanks, Pat. We have a last spot on our agenda for public comments. If anyone other than Lisa would like to address the council, they may do so now.
Good evening. I'm Karen Klein-Ludwick and of 290 Cutter Avenue. I just want to give an update on Thompson Boulevard, the builder there, Allen Edwin Homes. You know, I don't know if you have been thinking too much about what the quality of these homes is going to be. You'd think that spending $290, which is about the lowest you can go in at, you'd be getting a top-of-the-line home. But as far as the foundation, their guarantee is for one year, 12 months. So if your foundation cracks after that, you know, and I'm not sure how that compares to the modular companies, but I'm quite sure, and I can find out for the next time, what the guarantees are on foundations. And as far as the quality of the building, because my husband had worked in the modular construction industry for the majority of his career, there are standards in the modular homes that are not being met by the stick-built home builder. So we've had to ask for some modifications to meet what we consider to be our standards for that type of thing. So I'm not advocating for myself because, you know, we're taking care of that, but for future homeowners in that area. And the other concern is as far as accommodations for people with disabilities. So we're dealing with our situation at this point. But the modular, we had planned to have accommodations for, it had a first-floor laundry. It had 36-inch-wide doors that would accommodate for wheelchairs, that type of thing. So just so people are aware that, you know, that's kind of what we're working with. You know, more advocating for future homeowners, not necessarily myself.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? Any unfinished business at council level? Any new, oh, sure, public comment?
I thought I was on the agenda. Homeless Awareness Month?
Yeah, yeah, they, well, they did pass the proclamation. But yeah, I thought you were going to get up at the beginning. But yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I just wanted to thank you for having me. My name is Holly Carpenter. I am the McKenney-Vento Grant Coordinator for Branch and Hillsdale Counties. McKenney-Vento is a federal act that provides educational protection to homeless students. The definition of homeless for McKenney-Vento is much more broad than it is for HUD. For McKenney-Vento, it's lacking a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. Last year, for Branch County, 451 students were identified. And for every student that was identified, you can probably assume that there was one student that was hidden in plain sight, was not identified. I just want to thank you for the proclamation that November is Homeless Awareness Month. And I want to invite you to come out to Hope Cafe on Sunday, which is the 20th, from 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. Myself and several coworkers will be doing one night without a home, and we will be sleeping outside. So if anybody would like to join us and freeze with us, you're more than welcome. Does anybody have any questions about McKenney-Vento or?
No, but good presentation.